Amendment to the fiscal year 2020 annual plan. I am Janelle Hudson, Director of NYCHA's Resident Engagement Department, and I will be your moderator this evening. Thank you for joining us for this virtual public hearing. In a moment, I will introduce the interpretation services we have available this evening. Then, there will be a brief overview of the public hearing process and the annual plan and significant amendments, introductions of NYCHA's panelists, comments from NYCHA's Chair Gregory Russ, followed by comments from those of you who are joining tonight. We have a sign language interpreter for the hearing impaired who will be visible on video for the duration of this meeting. We also have Spanish, Russian, and Chinese interpreters available via phone. Interpreters, would you please introduce yourselves?
Gracias por asistir a la audiencia pública de NYCHA sobre el plan anual de la agencia 2020-2021. Si necesita interpretación en español, por favor marque el 646 838 1534 e ingrese el número de conferencia 793 993 224 y la tecla numeral. Gracias y bienvenidos.
Hola, bienvenido a la audiencia pública de NYCHA sobre el plan anual de la agencia 2020-2021. Si necesita interpretación en español, por favor marque el 646 838 1534
Здравствуйте. Сегодня вы посещаете публичное слушание NYCHA по готовому плану на финансовый год 2021 и значительные поправки готовому плану на финансовый год 2020. Если вам понадобится перевод на русский язык, вы можете набрать следующий номер: 646 838 1534 и после этого ввести код 352 433 975 и знак решетки. Спасибо.
Thank you all for taking the time to attend our very first virtual public hearing. Normally, we would be assembled in person in a very large auditorium, but nothing about 2020 has been normal besides our collective resiliency. We appreciate that you have made this a priority and are here with us in our even larger virtual auditorium. In accordance with Section 5A of the United States Housing Act of 1937 as amended, housing authorities are required to develop, with review and input from residents and the general public, annual plans for the coming year and then gather input on the plans from residents and the general public. Federal law allows a public housing authority to modify or amend its annual plan. Significant amendments to the plan must also be brought to a public forum to provide residents and the general public the opportunity to comment. On October 16th, 2020, NYCHA released the draft fiscal year 2021 annual plan and the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year 2020 annual plan for public review. This amendment is for the fiscal year 2020 capital plan and five-year action plan and several real estate development activities. The draft plan and the draft significant amendment are available for public review on NYCHA's website. The executive summaries for the draft annual plan and the draft significant amendment are available in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Russian on NYCHA's website. This public hearing is also currently being livestreamed on YouTube and the recording of this hearing will be available on NYCHA's website after the hearing has concluded. As part of the annual plan and significant amendment process, NYCHA met with members of the Resident Advisory Board and Citywide Council of Presidents at nine meetings between March and November this year. The draft fiscal year 2021 annual plan and the draft amendment were also sent to all Resident Advisory Board delegates and to each Resident Association president. I would like to thank the eight members of the Citywide Council of Presidents, Daniel Barber, Lilly Marshall, Ethel Vales, Reginald Bowman, Ann Cotton Morris, Dr. Brenda Harris, Renona Bradham, and Lilly Lozano, and the thirty-seven RAB delegates representing each of the C-COP's nine districts and including one Section 8 resident. We encourage residents and the public to provide written comments on the draft fiscal year 2021 annual plan and the draft significant amendment. You can provide comments via email through the regular mail or this evening at the public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain the views, comments, and recommendations of the public on the draft fiscal year 2021 annual plan and the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year 2020 annual plan. The draft plans and draft amendment are not final and will be modified before they are submitted to HUD. Please understand, however, that this evening is not intended as a forum for verbal exchange. NYCHA representatives will not engage in discussions with the speakers, nor will they respond to questions. They are present to hear what you have to say about the draft plans and draft significant amendments. Joining us tonight, we have NYCHA board members Greg Russ, Chair and CEO, Joseph Adams, Member, Paula Gavin, Member, Matt Gual, Member, Victor A. Gonzalez, Member, and Jacqueline Young, Member. We also have General Manager Vito Mustachulo, and we have Deputy Inspector Howard Gottman from the NYPD's Housing Bureau here this evening. We will now hear from our Chair Gregory Russ.
Janelle, thank you so much, and I want to welcome everybody to this virtual meeting. And I want to thank you for your time tonight. That includes my fellow board members, resident representatives, staff, and general members of the public. Quickly, as an introduction, this is an important process, this annual plan that we're going to be talking about, because it comes at a time when NYCHA is going to be embarking on significant changes. Those changes are going to come to us through a number of initiatives that are now underway in order to change both how the organization operates and changes and ideas that we have had about how to raise the capital investment that's required for us to maintain and operate our units over the long term. And a lot of you have heard us talk about this before in terms of a blueprint for change. And what we're proposing in the next months as this unfolds are three major initiatives that we hope will come to fruition. One is a investment strategy, a strategy that would be intended to address our needs under the HUD compliance agreement that we signed in January of 2019 by providing deep repair to key systems and key issues that we have with our properties and in our apartments. The second area that is going to be important is an organizational strategy, a transformation plan. This is actually required by the agreement we signed with HUD and the Southern District. We have to prepare a plan that reorganizes the agency, and then we're going to have to prepare a series of implementation steps to follow on to that plan. That plan is currently out for public comment, and comments are due by December 28. And lastly, if we are successful in creating the kind of capital at the scale and level that we need, then we hope to employ a jobs and recovery strategy. We want to strengthen our Section 3. We want to strengthen MBE and WBE and expand and deepen economic opportunities for our residents and training opportunities for both residents and our current workforce. So these three things together will mark a year of transition, and our annual plan process is going to be reflective of that. So let's go to the next slide. What we've been proposing in terms of the funding that we need to raise is an $18 billion investment to address the areas in the HUD agreement that are so difficult for NYCHA currently and meet basic housing quality standards for 110,000 apartments. This 110,000 complements the 62,000 units we project would go through the Rental Assistance Demonstration, that's the RAD program, and PACT. The stabilization plan, the blueprint for the stabilization, includes $9.5 billion of investment to attack mold, particularly replacing the pipes in the building. These are the risers that are behind the walls that provide hot and cold water to the bathroom or the kitchen, and also the waste lines, all sources of leaks, breaks, and other issues in our properties that cause really significant repair, really significant problems, and of course, if left unattended, create the mold situations that we have in many of our apartments. While the walls are open, we're also proposing to do full kitchen and bath upgrades, increasing the quality of those fixtures and providing a full set of kitchen and bath fixtures in good condition. Additionally, we would attack any ventilation issues related to the bath, and often there's a vent in the kitchen as well. We're proposing to do lead abatement. This means removing the lead from the unit. This is about a billion dollars' worth of work over 110,000 units. That is to take the lead out so that in the future, when that apartment is rented, and especially when that apartment is rented with children under six, we don't have to worry, and neither do their parents or their guardians need to worry about lead in that unit. It's a very important step to bring our units into compliance. We also want to upgrade our heat, our boiler systems and so forth. That's a $4.1 billion investment because we would like to abandon and move away from our large central boiler systems and the distribution lines that are attached to them. These are very inefficient and old technologies. Even though NYCHA has a favorable utility rate, that rate is offset by the inefficiency of these boilers and their age and the constant need for repair. We're proposing that each building would have its own heat plant and its own set of boilers, and these smaller boilers would include backups so that we could deal with a boiler that's down without losing heat to the building and without losing hot water. Elevators would also get a dramatic makeover to reduce outages. This is a $1.6 billion investment we're proposing to make that would touch everything from the controls that are up in the penthouse, the tip-top of the roof, all the way down to the elevator pit. In addition, we want to invest $370 million in new waste yards, interior compact work, and trash handling of all kinds at the buildings and on the sites. And lastly, we have a set of items that we've bundled together based on feedback we have heard from the residents. We want to improve security by changing the main door access, changing the doors themselves or the way the doors work, or both. We want to repair the intercoms or provide alternatives to the intercom system, and we want to add cameras for security. And lastly, we want to replace gas risers. And if we're not replacing the gas riser, convert the building to electric cooking if that's appropriate, and we can afford to do it. This is an $18 billion investment. It is possible, if we raise more money, that we can do more work. In fact, if we raise another $7 billion, that's a total of $25 billion altogether. We could begin to think about addressing issues in community centers, the grounds, and exterior cladding of the building. So that is the amount that we would need to stabilize, and if we're hopeful, we would be doing a larger scope of work that I just mentioned. Next slide, please. How do we propose to do this? The way that we are structured, where we're receiving subsidy from the federal government, means that NYCHA has to comply with a set of rules. And the question is, inside that set of rules, how could we access more subsidy? This is the dilemma that we have faced as a housing authority, not just us, but many housing authorities across the country. And we want to access this additional subsidy and making sure that the resident rights and protections are not compromised. Well, to do that, we're proposing that we create a new entity, the New York City Public Housing Preservation Trust. And why do we need this? We need this because, under the current federal statutes, the current structures that are imposed on housing authorities, the only way we can access additional subsidy is to transfer the property and trigger eligibility for what's called a tenant protection voucher. The trust idea came as we looked around for ways to do procurement. We know we're going to have to do enormous amounts of procurement, large contracts across the entire city if we're going to be successful in stabilizing our properties. The School Construction Authority has examples of procurement processes that we thought would be helpful for a NYCHA-run public entity. And the trust is that. It's a public entity so that NYCHA and the trust form two public partners working to preserve our properties and invest in our units. So if the trust is created, it includes the procurement structure to allow us to do the kinds of procurement, large, large contracts that we need to do to repair our units. In addition, having this public entity allows us to access the tenant protection vouchers. NYCHA would make the transfer to the trust by entering into a long-term ground lease. This is not a sale. This is a ground lease. And it's very important to understand the difference because, again, there's a partnership. NYCHA is on one side as the ultimate owner of these properties, and the trust is over here holding the properties so that we can make this kind of investment. Again, this is from a public entity to a public entity. The trust in turn contracts back to NYCHA for management and operation and services and other services that residents are familiar with. So this retains our representative workforce. In doing this, we also set up the ability to go to HUD and, in effect, make a demand that we access these additional subsidies through these tenant protection vouchers. We are eligible for them. We'd be eligible for the transfer. And if HUD approves the transfer, all the apartments that are occupied on the date that the transfer is approved or were occupied 24 months prior to that date would be eligible for a voucher. These vouchers can then be property-based, attached to the properties, so we have stable and more valuable funding each year. Then, the additional money we receive because of this transfer can be used to raise upfront funds for capitals and make the necessary repairs. So if we can create the trust and access the vouchers, we're going to be able to stabilize our units, meet the compliance requirements of the HUD agreement, meet basic housing quality standards. The trust would have to be created under state law. This gives us the opportunity to put into the state law resident rights and affordability in perpetuity. And this also means that we're holding rents the same as the programs that the trust runs under vouchers have the same rent calculations as the program of public housing. This would also position the properties for long-term financial stability and over time, allow NYCHA to make even more investment to make sure the properties are repaired and stay strong. We can access capital with a public entity. There's no private owner involved in this. And the trust is a public entity and retains the properties for this sole public purpose of investment, finance, and repair. And lastly, if we do this in the next few years, we create an economic recovery opportunity post-COVID by investing in public housing as an infrastructure that's part of New York City. Next slide, please. A little bit about the trust. The trust is a public entity. NYCHA would use the ground lease model to transfer the property to the trust, the trust in turn contracting back to NYCHA for services and staffing. I've mentioned that we would use some aspects of the procurement flexibilities given to the School Construction Authority. I've already mentioned the long-term ground lease. The trust has another function. It does construction management of the contractors that we would bring in to do this work. In addition, the trust could also, on its own or in partnership with other agencies, help do the financing that we would be able to do, given the additional subsidy that comes in when we transfer to the voucher. The trust contracts back to NYCHA for many services, including the day-to-day operations of the properties. So this allows the property to stay under public control end to end. It allows the capital work that's needed to fulfill the compliance requirements of the HUD agreement in the areas that I talked about earlier. The state legislation, if we're successful, would include a full set of resident protections, resident protections that have been represented to us as important and significant. In effect, we increase the subsidy and we layer on top the public housing program rights. Plus, we wrap up the affordability for these sites in perpetuity. By doing the work related to the heat and boilers that I mentioned earlier, we have a chance to save or achieve significant energy efficiency. This is really important because it means that we can begin, as part of the citywide effort, to do a green financing, green improvements, all kinds of technologies that would allow us to save energy over the long term. Plus, the trust, by contracting back to NYCHA, means that our public represented workforce is retained. Next slide, please. In addition to this capital work, we're going to be in a year where we have to undergo significant organizational changes. These changes are coming as part of NYCHA's Transformation Plan, the one that I mentioned is out for comment. There's changes proposed to NYCHA's board structure and executive management that means separating the Chair and the Chief Executive Officer positions, converting by title the General Manager to Chief Operating Officer, combining Asset Management and Capital Departments under one Capital Management Officer. More importantly, we want to change the way we do property management in the field and how services are delivered. We want to have property portfolios that are based on a neighborhood model. We want to reduce the scale of control that staff have to exercise so that it's easier to have eyes on the buildings. We want to move from a six-borough structure to four geographic structures, from 21 regional asset managers to 30 neighborhood managers. We want to change the administrative teams, that is, create teams that work in the borough to support property operations by placing staff at the point of service delivery. So these are things that would change, really in a very fundamental way, how NYCHA manages property in the field. And we have to do this plan. This is not an optional thing for NYCHA. And it's not going to be done in a way that is careless. We spend a lot of time coming up with ideas. Those ideas are out for comment. We hope that next year, we would begin to pull together a final document, and we would be working with NYCHA's monitor in an effort to complete that plan and get a plan approved, hopefully, by sometime in early March. Then we would have time in conjunction with our stakeholders and others, with the monitor team and our partners to the agreement to begin to work on the implementation strategies to put this in place. And we are compelled to do this. It is not a change that we're going to start and abandon. We're required to do it, and we want to do it, under the terms of the HUD agreement that was signed in January 2019. This is significant, as the capital plan investment is also significant. And next year is going to be the beginning of this change, this movement, in the best of ways, we hope, for the housing authority. Next slide, please. So we're also looking at the business processes that we have to reform in order to serve residents better. We've heard from residents on all sorts of issues related to alternative work schedule. And we're in the process of evaluating that, and we want to look to improving how that is done and what it's going to take to do that. We want to do what's called a property-based budget. This means, for property managers, they will have more control of their budgets. But it also means that we'd be able to share information about the budget and resources available at each property. And that's the kind of thing that's important to share with the resident associations, resident leaders, and others who are interested in what's going on at that property. We want to take on work order reforms, improve the sequencing of work orders for the skilled trades. And we want to take on issues with the annual recertification process, streamline that so it's easier to do and residents can see into the rent calculation and to understand why they're paying what they're paying. So in addition to the operating structure, we want to take on these business processes and reform them as well. Next slide, please. So we are in the process of engaging residents, employees, and other stakeholders to gather feedback around this. The transformation plan concepts are embedded in a document that's on your screen now. Comments are accepted through December 28. And if someone can't see this, we'd be glad if you reach out to us to provide the information on where to submit your public comments. This is a really important step as we begin to get ready for 2021. And what are our hopes? Our hopes, first of all, are for all of you on the call tonight on sharing your time with us that you stay safe in this time of this really difficult health crisis. We want you to be safe and stay strong so that next year, as we work our way past COVID, we can begin to think about how NYCHA should work better for all of its residents and begin to think about how NYCHA can raise the money that it needs to invest back in our properties. This is a really fundamental time for change, and we believe as we get past the COVID pandemic, we're going to be able to make these changes and begin to shift how NYCHA does business and begin to shift the quality and condition of our units. I think that's the last slide?
Yes.
Yes. So there are instructions for public comment, and I'm going to pass this back for those of you that are interested in providing comments to us. And thank you so much for, again, sharing your time tonight and look forward to hearing from you. And understand that there are risks here, so we want to hear your concerns and your issues, and we're ready to listen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair. So we hope that everyone who has a comment will be able to express it this evening. So let's go over the following ground rules to make this event run smoothly. Attendees who submitted a request to speak via email will be called on to speak in order of submission. When called on to speak, please ensure your microphone is not muted. If you are dialing in by phone, you will need to press star 6 to unmute yourself. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak, and you will see a countdown clock on the screen, so please keep an eye on that clock so that you know when your time limit is approaching. If you have additional comments or if you have an issue that concerns only you or your apartment, you can submit written comments via email. Staff from our operations and customer operation departments are joining us this evening and will be reviewing comments as well. If you did not submit a request to speak in advance of this hearing and you wish to speak, please and you wish to speak, please type your request to speak in the Zoom Q and A box and include your name and NYCHA development or organizational affiliation. As a last alternative, you may raise your hand. If you are dialing in by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. So the order of speakers that I'll call on will be individuals who signed up in advance of the start of this hearing. First, I'll go through that list and speakers signing up in the Q and A box, followed by raised hands if time permits. If I get to call and raise hands and you are raising your hand over the phone, I will call out the last four digits of your phone number to alert you to speak at that time and then you'll be able to press star six to unmute yourself. If you are not responsive or no longer wish to speak when your name or phone number is called, I will need to move on to the next speaker. This hearing is being recorded and transcribed by a stenographer. Please begin by identifying yourself and your development or affiliation. Please remember that we are here to comment on the draft plan and draft significant amendments. Demeaning vulgar or discriminatory language as well as personal comments or attacks on resident representatives, public attendees, or NYCHA staff will not be tolerated. As moderator, I reserve the right to immediately move on to the next speaker in line if I deem comments as inappropriate. Please be considerate of your neighbors and follow these instructions. We are here to consider issues that are of concern to everyone, not issues that only concern a single resident or individual. So let's begin with comments from attendees who submitted a request to speak. When I call your name, please unmute yourself and begin speaking. When you are finished speaking and your time is up, please mute yourself so that other speakers can be heard. So our first speaker this evening is Assembly Member Linda Rosenthal.
Hi.
Hello.
Um, I don't have video. Can?
We can hear you.
Okay, but where is the video? I don't have a button here for video.
Yes, it's just, you'll just go ahead and be able to speak. We see your tile.
So nobody's seeing their face?
No.
Hello? Hello? No? Everybody's testifying as if it's on the phone?
We're verbally receiving your testimony.
Okay, I don't understand why you can't have people's faces, but okay, here goes. Good evening. I'm Assembly Member Lynda B. Rosenthal. I represent the Upper West Side and Hell's Kitchen in the sixty-seventh Assembly District. Thank you to Russ, Chair Russ, for the opportunity. I have three NYCHA developments in my Manhattan district, Amsterdam Houses, Amsterdam Houses Edition, and Harborview Terrace. Each development has shouldered the burden of NYCHA's failures throughout the years from extended gas and heating outages to unabated mold growth to persistent leaks. My constituents and I have fought tooth and nail to overcome these seemingly ceaseless challenges. I'm well aware of the financial constraints that NYCHA continues to face. However, I'm gravely concerned by the solutions proposed in the draft plan and its effects on the city's public housing stock in the future. The draft plan briefly alludes to NYCHA's blueprint for change. The blueprint centers around the conversion of section nine subsidies to section eight, ten protection vouchers under state developed public trust program. According to NYCHA, these vouchers would allow the agency to leverage approximately three point four billion dollars in loans to rehab units as required by the federal monitor. Ensuring adequate investment in public housing is among my top priorities as a legislator. NYCHA's apartments have required rehab for decades, and while I understand the urgent need before us, I have significant concerns and questions regarding the execution and potential ramifications of the blueprint. How does NYCHA intend to brief and involve communities about its proposed plan? NYCHA has continually failed to engender trust among its residents. Before NYCHA further pursues the blueprint, it's essential that a development outreach plan and tenant input period be established. Second, if this plan were to go into effect, how would NYCHA safeguard against the possibility of it defaulting on a private loan? In the event of default, what precautions would NYCHA proactively take to prevent the foreclosure on a development? How would NYCHA determine which developments receive the TPV if the federal government provides only a fraction of the requested vouchers? NYCHA has based the public trust around the bifurcated model of the New York City Department of Ed and New York City School Construction Authority. Does this new system create a more transparent and accountable system for NYCHA residents? The, it is critical that NYCHA act transparently and actively involve the voices of its tenants throughout the process. The draft plan also includes a section about sale of NYCHA air rights. This strategy has been floated by NYCHA for numerous years and despite being asked on numerous occasions, it has failed to produce for me a list of developments and their corresponding air rights. With a limited number of air rights at each development, the proposal fails to create a dedicated revenue stream for future repairs while selling off one of NYCHA's greatest assets. The sale of air rights could negatively impact the surrounding community as well as NYCHA tenants unless the city creates parameters for the transaction. NYCHA must also ensure that income generated from the sale is enough to have repairs at that particular development.
Thank you, Assembly Member Rosenthal. We will accept your written testimony, but we need to move on to the next speaker.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Karen Blondell, followed by Keith Ramsey.
Okay, good evening. My name is Karen Blondell and I'm an organizer in Brooklyn. I'm also a NYCHA resident out in Red Hook. And I just want to point out that not only are we dealing with a pandemic, we also dealt with political issues with elections this year. There were rezonings on the table and just like I told the Department of City Planning, it is unfair to go forward with any plans, any RAD, any infill during a pandemic. And especially when the residents don't have the devices or the wifi or the hotspots to engage. We've been engaging in South Brooklyn for over four years due to Gowanus Neighborhood Coalition for Justice and T three. And we can't even keep up. I just spent hours on a state assembly hearing about the blueprint. And they took a two minute break between eleven AM and, and, and five thirty when I came on this call. And it's really difficult for the residents to be able to engage in, in the middle of a pandemic, especially when they're putting two major hearings on at the same, on the same day. That's number one. I would like to also comment that on your annual plan and significant amendments, you wrote that you met with the resident advisory board, which is only forty-five people. And it should be about eighty, but I don't know where all of the alternatives went. And also the citywide council of presidents, which is nine more people. So for public housing, which represents over four hundred thousand New Yorkers, you're speaking to less than fifty people and you spoke to those people in, in the middle of a pandemic from March twentieth, April sixteenth, April thirtieth. We have not had any resident engagement in the public housing campuses. There are no minutes or anything for you to indicate that any of these presidents have been talking to the residents about the blueprint or about anything. I have engaged the residents as an organizer and working in conjunction with other nonprofits that I work with. So we know a little bit about the blueprint. But this engagement process is really not fair or it shouldn't even be legal for you guys to go forward. And I'm demanding a moratorium on RAD, infill, and any conversations until this pandemic is brought under control. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Blondell. Keith Ramsey?
You can hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear that? Great. Okay. I support in theory the New York City Public Trust. NYCHA needs forty billion dollars. If they do not act, there will be no public housing for low income residents. I attended two public housing conferences last year in which we were, in which we were told PAT and RAD is coming to, to New York City. And there's nothing nobody can do about it except move out or raise the forty billion dollars needed. The elected officials, NYCHA board and caucus failed miserably in, in that aspect. It will now be our job to smoothly transition the residents to this new system. We require the same protection and rights and responsibilities, responsibilities that we already have. We want to keep public housing public. More services must be included for residents, educational and job opportunities. According to NYCHA's resident data, databook, single black mothers leading headed households, seventy-two percent of black babies are born to single black mothers. Thirty-eight percent of black youth grow up with both parents. The median wealth for a single black mother is five bucks. Areas supported with single mothers have high crime rates. It's a fact. NYCHA has violence and crime problems. Can't blame Trump or the police, a white man, for this. Services and programs must be created to assist black mothers and their childrens. NYCHA staff must be rewarded and compensated when doing a good job and reprimanded and moved when loud, arrogant, deceptive, and subordinate, lazy people work in, in, in NYCHA developments. Some, like in Eastchester, to constantly write and complain on problematic staff and then to have local management in the borough and quality and cost and control, protect, defend, and make up false narratives about their pets is outrageous. We residents have standards here. If they don't perform to expectation, out you go, out. Stop rewarding low performing lazy staff. Stop favoring and discriminating based on gender. Lastly, residents are not, residents are not in our developments with NYCHA staff. The NYCHA staff is here with the residents. Remember and believe that. Thanks a lot, Janelle.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Next, we have Misha Brown. Misha Brown, you're next to speak.
Yes.
Hi.
Yeah, hi. How are you?
You may go ahead. Yes, you can start your.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, so my question was, how do we improve? How, how would you guys improve the, um, what is my strategy? How would you, one second? How would you guys improve the, um, the cleanliness of the COVID in the building because, but I've noticed is they're not being cleaned all the time? Like wiping down the glasses, cleaning, disinfecting the elevators or even the grounds part of the, of our buildings. It's not being consecutively and then I might see a couple of people, housing people cleaning, but then.
Okay, Ms. Brown, if you can just put your information in the Q and A box, just type your email address and we will have staff connect with you directly regarding your development.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Monica Underwood.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Monica Underwood. I'm a White House, I'm a resident of White House Gardens. I'm also the president of Fury Family and Economic Equality. Residents of White House Gardens. Come on, stop and do not want.
Sorry, yes. Can you please mute yourself, any speaker? Once you've spoken, please put your microphone on mute so that we can hear the other speakers. Okay.
Okay, did you hear my first part?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so I live in White House Gardens and the NYCHA residents of White House do not want infill or RAD. We say no to infill and no to RAD. My concern is the impact this will have on our community. We're in the middle of a pandemic. And this does concern me because black lives do matter. NYCHA needs repair and not now. I'm tired of the politics of NYCHA. There's certain individuals that's quote unquote lining their pockets to side with info or RAD. We need resident engagement. Without the residents, there'll be no NYCHA. Okay, ninety-five percent of us pay our rent on time. We're, we're holding NYCHA up. And we just want resident engagement and every resident should have a vote or say in this blueprint, this RAD, with everything that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. Our next speaker is Board President Gail Brewer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You can hear me, right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I am Gail Brewer. I'm the Manhattan Board President. And I just want to say this is a complicated topic, whether it's the PAC NYCHA two point O and section eight or the issue of the blueprint. And I think it is unfortunate, not your fault necessarily, that the Assembly and NYCHA are having something on the same night. But I have had the honor of seeing like a front row seat on these issues, three reasons. Number one, we sat through Chelsea Working Group with Fulton and Elliot Chelsea with amazing residents and the folks from the city going through what a better pact would look like. It's not perfect, but there's a lot of resident protection. And in it is a hotline for Manhattan residents to talk about the section eight lease. That has to be something that's part of every single discussion. However, I want you to know that despite the great words of the chair and the NYCHA at the highest level, it is not what happens. And the two previous speakers at the beginning, right after the Assembly member said it very well. You know, for instance, virtual town halls are not accessible to everybody. We know during this pandemic, there were many town halls, for instance, at Wise Towers. And the president, Mr. Carrera, pointed out that most seniors don't have Zoom. They can't. And they offered, we offered to work with God of Riverside and they said no because cloth was the designated nonprofit. Cloth doesn't know the Upper West Side. You've got to have local nonprofits, not somebody from another part of town. Number two, there is a constant disconnect between formal notification and interaction with residents. So many times residents are told there's an inspection coming. And guess what? In one case, they thought it was to fix something and it was just to sign a COVID form. That's not acceptable. Third, coordinated communication between NYCHA and PRC on management matters are lacking. I can tell you so many times that there are questions that don't get answered. So with thousands of units to go under PAC and RAD conversion, if this is going to happen, we cannot have this leadership communication gaps with the Manhattan bundle. Residents need to be engaged with the blueprint. If this is the example of the past, then it's not going to work for the blueprint. People are already upset at the Assembly hearing that they don't know what's going on. So if you're going to do the tenant protection vouchers, you have to explain all this to people. And so I want to believe, along with the Community Service Society and the Legal Aid Society, I, I understand and support the concept. But the way in which it is implemented, if anything is indicative like the past, it is not going to work. And so the TPVs have to be higher subsidies and the trust has to have an enormous responsibility to administer six or eighteen dispositions to finance public housing capital repairs. And there have to be mechanisms to ensure transparency. And residents must be fully in place at the onset. That's the only way this is going to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board President. Next speaker, Lakeisha Taylor.
Yes, hi. I want to thank you for this opportunity. My name is Lakeisha Taylor. I am from the Holmes Isaac, I'm, sorry, I'm from Holmes Towers on the Upper East Side. I am also a co-founder of the Holmes Isaac Coalition, which was a coalition in which that we had to form because our development was slated for infill back in two thousand fifteen. And this again, well, not again, but this is one of the solutions that NYCHA thought was a great idea in which that they were going to take the playground in which that my two year old learned to walk on, which hundreds of the children that live here play on. which hundreds of the children that live here play on. And I feel that this blueprint plan is just a reincarnation of NYCHA 2.0 and whatever other plan that NYCHA comes up with that they do not truly engage the tenants on. Because as I was standing in my lobby trying to inform the residents about this plan, no one knew. Because again, no one has any true information on it. When you are trying to put in a ticket, you hear about the blueprint, you hear about it, and that's all you know about it. You know the name, you hear the name, you haven't gotten any concrete information. I have concrete information because I'm an organizer trying to unify and help my community. I am fighting for the better good of my community, for tenants who have holes in their wall, who have mold in their home, who, my child is almost burned on a pipe that is two-hundred-and-two degrees, and no one has given me any answers. So no one has any information on a plan that came about in August, information that was not disseminated to us because we do not have a tenant association that was disbanded in September that we were supposed to have, we were supposed to try and come up with new, a new leadership, but because of COVID, it has stopped, and nothing has come about since. But yet, everyone is on Zoom trying to hear about a plan that no one is on. You have, you're going to have four members from NYCHA and more members from other entities. We are not involved, and when the plan is set and done, then you're going to bring it to the residents. Then we will have true engagement. But yet, we are the ones who are living in this atrocity. We are the ones suffering from the hole, from the mold, from the rats, from the infestation, but you're telling us that this is the best plan for us without truly engaging us, without truly having our words heard. But yet, you are lying and saying that you're speaking to us when you're only speaking to less than one percent of us. You are telling us lies upon lies and expecting us to believe, Mr. Russ, and we don't.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. At this time, actually, I would like to invite everybody to, I believe it's our sixth webinar that we'll be having on the topic of the blueprint. We have one scheduled for tomorrow at ten AM. We will be sure to send out that registration link so that everyone can, on this call tonight, can join the Zoom webinar tomorrow on the blueprint. Our next speaker is Danette Chavis.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, my name is Danette Chavis, and I'm a stakeholder for LaGuardia Houses, representing the interests and concerns in regards to the planned proposals. My comment is on the blueprint for change. NYCHA cannot void its instant agreement with its tenants by handing over all rights to its obligations in return for money. NYCHA is seeking to enter into agreements with private entities on a profit-based objective. They are in violation of contractual agreements with its tenants who occupy and live in their dwelling spaces void of heat and hot water, gas in which to cook, floodings, lead, and pipes that burst frequently. The rats in these developments run more readily than the elevators, and the mold inside the apartments not only has them sick, but has exacerbated conditions while rendering medical treatment sought in vain. Because like NYCHA, they don't get better, they get worse, but there is no one coming to their aid or rescue. Because the law, which should have protected them, is being sought by NYCHA to implement the biggest theft of all time. The theft of public housing. They are not looking to take and preserve it, but to co-opt it into a multi-billion-dollar adventure where people are the sacrificial lambs being sued and encouraged that everything will be okay. You cannot void your agreement with the tenants at the cost to them. They are paying for what you lack in regards to ability to make the needed repairs. A lack of funds as the excuse by those who mismanaged the funds given, neglected to spend what was given, while lying each and every step of the way cannot be placed on the backs of tenants who faithfully throughout all of it fulfill their end of the bargain by faithfully paying rent. To appeal to the law to undo them at no cost to NYCHA is criminal because a profit is being sought under the guise of seeking repairs. We know this to be true because the measures being sought require dilapidated conditions they were made to dwell in in order to make the criteria for the transformation being sought for. In other words, this was allowed for these tenants to dwell in, not a lack of funding, and certainly not to the tune of billions. You've spent cheap labor when making repairs, but when asked to give a tally of your debt, it's billions? How is it billions are needed when mere thousands were spent? Who calculated the cost of the repairs needed? NYCHA? Lying, paper hiding, falsifying NYCHA? Them? And we're supposed to take their word, which allows them to sell off their properties, collect rent, and cry broke? Where'd they do that at?
Thank you, Ms. Chavis. Next, we have Valerie Bell. Valerie Bell, please unmute yourself. Okay, we'll move on to Linda LaVoilette.
Yes, good morning, good afternoon. My name is Linda LaVoilette. I'm here as a member of Voice of Gowanus. Voice of Gowanus is a coalition of community organizations and individual citizens. We are here to stand with our neighbors and voice our support for NYCHA residents and keep public housing public. Voice of Gowanus is opposed to the proposed plan to sell publicly-owned NYCHA buildings and turn them into a public-private partnership. We are opposed to Mayor de Blasio and Councilmember Brad Lander and NYCHA's efforts to create an unhealthy environment for current and future residents of NYCHA and the Gowanus neighborhood. We are opposed to infill and RAD, particularly until there is a study that demonstrates that the rights of tenants are truly protected. We are opposed to the Gowanus rezoning and ask for moratorium. Why, we ask, were ten thousand NYCHA residents left out of the Gowanus rezoning? We call for EPA oversight on any Gowanus rezoning. We request that EPA evaluate the proposed rezoning and infill development and guarantee that any development will not compromise the Gowanus Canal cleanup. Their failed housing and zoning, rezoning policy is directly responsible for the systematic decay of NYCHA maintenance and community infrastructure. They have failed to adequately fund building repairs. They have failed to remove lead and toxic mold from apartments where children live. The city has also dragged their feet and failed to build retention tanks for the Gowanus Superfund cleanup. They have given away our money, money that should have gone to NYCHA repairs and maintenance. This type of management and fiscal policy is irresponsible because for nearly two decades, the city, state, and federal government have systematically underfunded NYCHA. Yet, the city has been consistently granting wealthy developers twenty-five-year tax abatements. This policy has removed millions and billions of dollars of tax revenue, money that should have gone to repair NYCHA housing and eliminate lead from housing. We are in the midst of a pandemic and perhaps the greatest crisis in New York City. Mayor de Blasio and Councilmember Lander insist on pushing through op-zoning before the end of the term. We request no RAD, and we want a moratorium on the Gowanus Land Use Review Proceedings. And we also want a racial impact study. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Louis Flores.
Hello, thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Louis Flores. I'm from a group called Fight for NYCHA. My comment is about the blueprint, but as well as the overall push by the mayor, who is obviously the one who is driving the entire effort to privatize and end public housing as we know it. The mayor first tried RAD to end Section 9 housing, but due to a lot of activism by many tenants, RAD is now on shaky ground. Now the mayor is trying this blueprint to end Section 9 housing. Both plans try to end the New Deal promise of public housing. We saw earlier today in the New York State Assembly Hearing on Housing, groups like the Community Service Society and the Legal Aid Society support the blueprint. This is very suspect because these are the same groups who said that RAD protected tenants' rights. As a member of Fight for NYCHA, we have spent two years highlighting the dangers of RAD, most recently in a letter sent by our civil rights attorney, Michael Sussman, to the mayor. But the mayor has not answered our concerns, and instead, he uses Greg Russ as a decoy to promote plans like the blueprint. This confuses residents about who is really selling out public housing. Tonight, Greg Russ was saying that, that they're going to be tenant protections, but that's not true. He has said the same thing about RAD, but in the RAD agreements, there is a tool that allows RAD landlords to deregulate public housing. And other groups who are supporting the blueprint, earlier today at the Assembly Hearing, they threatened residents by saying that if they did not, if they, I'm sorry, if they did not support the blueprint, that the Joe Biden administration would end public housing. Come on, this is like lies. And we learned today from Greg Floyd during the Assembly Hearing that he and Alika Samuel met with Greg Russ in 2018, and they agreed to support RAD together. This means that for the last few years, the mayor and NYCHA have been perpetrating a fraud by putting on a pretense of resident engagement. There was never going to be meaningful resident engagement on RAD, just like there was never going to be meaningful resident engagement on the blueprint. All of this is a farce, and I'm going to report this to the U.S. Attorney.
Next speaker, Victoria Shumrings.
It's Cambrahas, thank you.
Cambrahas, sorry.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me and for listening in, for allowing me to listen in on this important conversation. I was earlier listening in to the Assembly Hearing, which, as Dawn pointed out, was a really, really long session. And I just had a few comments. So NYCHA is public housing as a human right. Built almost a century ago to replace slums in our city, it has now become that slum. This was a choice made by successive Congress members who lost their taste for funding public housing once the Fair Housing Act ended racial discrimination in NYCHA. This managed decline has become a symbol of the prioritization of our values, which are no longer in the service of we, the people. NYCHA has eliminated funding needs for capital improvements and infrastructure, which is why I fully support and endorse Congresswoman Nidia Velazquez's bill to restore funding to NYCHA to the state it held when it was housing majority white families. This is not a bailout bill. It is a restoration of our priorities and values, as well as our responsibility as a government for the people, by the people, to those who we are entrusted to serve. The RAD and PAC programs, as well as this new blueprint, is a way to eliminate Section 9, which is the only true form of public housing, and is in direct contradiction to keeping public housing public. No plan for value capture or leveraging tenant vouchers, which are project-based and non-transferable, can meet the demands and fulfill the responsibilities of our government as the Velazquez bill to ensure that NYCHA funding comes straight from capital budgets on the federal, state, and city level. We have hundreds of billions for our defense budget, for killing people around the world, and for our imperial endeavors. We can also be a nation of decency and responsibility towards our public housing residents, and that is why I oppose this blueprint. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Joshua Barnett. Please unmute yourself. Joshua Barnett. Okay, we'll move on to Rosalind Nyman.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rosalind Nyman. I'm a NYCHA resident at Farragut Houses in Brooklyn. I just have like two questions. One is, I just found out about this program due to, you know, when you get your rent statement, it was all the blueprint was, the information was there. So in the past months, they've been, you know, doing the boilers and the heaters, everything is, you know, basically been brand new. They've been working on it. And my thing is, I read information about this PAC program. It sounds similar to the RAD program, and I kind of get it. But my thing is, when this does occur, how are they going to do it with residents who do not want to stay in their apartment during renovations? I mean, with all the sun and the mold, you know, and some people's apartments are basically decent, but stating that they've been living there for years, and then they need to tear it down? People don't want to be living, you know, staying in these conditions when this takes place. How are they going to deal with the residents with that? You know, those that are vulnerable, who are older, disabilities. And number two, I was hearing one of the other tenants that was stating that it's really unsafe, and especially in my building here, we have a lot of people that are living in the stairwell. How are they going to deal with that? A lot of activity in the lobby. I really feel unsafe, and I'm bringing this in during the pandemic, and I've made several complaints to management. That number that we call seven oh seven, and also there's another number, which is, it's a seven-one-eight number, but a six-four-nine that deals with NYCHA, and I think they're out, based out in East New York. But, you know, I get what they're saying also, but, you know, a lot of us are scared, you know, if they try to kick us out.
Okay, Ms. Nyman, thank you. So I'm going to invite you to attend our webinar on the blueprint so that you can learn more about the plan, and then we can exchange, and you can ask questions and receive answers directly from the Chair and other members of the executive team. So we will email you a link tonight. There's one tomorrow, and then we have another one, I believe it's on December seventeenth. So we'll be sure to get that link to you, and we really would like for you to attend. Our next speaker is Chantel Brooks. Chantel Brooks, please unmute yourself. Okay, Bernice Tillery.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Wow. Well, thank you, Mr. Russ, and as you can see, as NYCHA tenants, we are certainly interested in our lives, in our homes. The question that I wanted to ask is not even adequate. I'm going to continue to delve into this information because I found it on NYCHA's website. I haven't had access to getting our mail from the management office, where we normally, I'm on a tenant association, where we normally pick up our mail, and this Blueprint for Change is two-hundred-and-ninety-one pages. So I have not gone through it, but I'm very happy to hear the Manhattan Borough President on the line tonight. I will try to the best of my ability to engage her and get more information as there are some pretty informed people. as there are some pretty informed people and tenants on the line. We are concerned and we do care about where we live, how and that we live. We don't want to end up like Cabrini-Green in Chicago, being torn down and displaced scattered to the wind. This is very important to us. And we're going to continue to fight for our rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Edith Adams. Edith Adams.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Edith Adams. I live in Queensbridge North, and I'm concerned with this plan. One, first of all, a 200-plus document that is prepared for NYCHA residents to read is ridiculous because most people are not going to read after the first five pages. And then secondly, I'm concerned with, once these repairs are made, you have to remove people from out of the apartment to do so. And where do you, where are they going to be placed? And what is the guarantee of them being placed back into their apartments, you know? I understand now that I'm looking at a lot of these buildings that are being designed, that a lot of them are not structurally sound. And so I think what has happened is the people who are with RAD have found, finally realized that NYCHA buildings are constructurally sound buildings. And I think because the low-income people or middle-income people live there, now they want to turn them into condos and whatnot, and I think that's just so unfair. Because where do we, where do, where are we to go? You know, what else is left to take from us? We don't have much, but yet we still live in these conditions to the best of our abilities, and we we seem to never have a way out of this. We, because once we live here, it's like we're stuck on this roller coaster ride that is a circular ride. It never ends. And I think that's just so sad how you take, how the government takes advantage of people who cannot always do well for themselves, you know. We need to get together as NYCHA residents and not let this happen, you know. I I look at homelessness in New York, and that's cannot, can no longer be contained. So now that we have these new housing programs coming about, that's just going to add to homelessness, and I just don't think that's fair. You keep putting these managers and hiring managers as opposed to hiring people off of civil service exams who could possibly do the work, especially those who live in these developments. They have trades, they have skills. Train them and help them to, so that they can do the repairs and still stay, you know. I'm tired of seeing money being placed in pocketbooks that don't live in the developments, you know. I want to thank you all for being here. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Again, please attend one of our blueprint webinar sessions so you can learn more about the plan that you spoke on. Next, we have Crystal Glover.
Good evening. I tuned in around after 6 o'clock. So I didn't really get to hear much, but I will say this. Karen Blandell, you are my hero. I love you, and they need you as TA president over there. You need to be on tenant, so you need to be a resident council person because it's the resident council that can sign off on tenant participation activity money. You could be using that money for programs. Yeah, we may be in a pandemic, but it's still business as usual. And I think this is, and also Keith Ramsey and all the people who had, all the tenants who have spoken so far. You are brilliant, and it's just like my TA president said, we learned this information years ago, when we, when NYCHA does all these conferences with the National Low Income Housing Coalition and all of these things here. All of these coalitions that they, NYCHA spend millions of dollars on for us to go to these conferences to learn how to be effective resident councils, to learn how we can operate our own developments, possibly buy our own homes. The list goes on and on and on and on. And I have to say this, Mr. Chair, that, well, two things I would like to say, if you let me. One thing is, oh, God, there's so many things I want to say. But we residents have to know, these resident associations, that's, they were formed to be a voice for us. Just the other day, the back of my building, I see two rats making out. The rat is standing up, and the other rat is performing. So I said, that's it. I see the superintendent, or put it this way, I see a man dressed in housing attire. I asked him who he was. He said he was the superintendent. I told him my building. I told him we need water under that scaffolding on the ground, and we need the garbage cans brought closer to the curb so that the rats won't greet us when we open the door. And he did exactly what I asked him. I'm in Washington Houses. He did precisely what I asked him to do, and that didn't take $33 billion. He moved the cans away from the entrance of the door where the rats were greeting us, and he moved them to the curb like I asked. Not only did he do that, he added three new cans on there. What am I trying to say? The ball is in our court. We bitching and moaning and complaining about what this one ain't doing for us, and that one ain't doing this and this and this, where we got C-Cop and all of these people who are supposed to be representing us. They should be pulling us together, development by development, forming a rally of some sort, blocking, shutting New York down. Okay, NYCHA has allowed the management and all these things to just deteriorate. And and that's truly therefore, because they
Thank you, Ms. Glover.
Allowed this to happen.
Thank you for your comments. Oshun Prieria.
Yes, hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My question is, because I live in West Van Houders over there, I wanted to come to that walk. And there's like a lot of gun violence and everything that's been going on over there, and I live on the second floor in my apartment, and I made like a couple of complaints to management office about a gun wound that was in my son's window. And nothing has been, you know, retrieved since, or nothing has been coming, um, for them to come and fix it. And I'm putting in front of emergency fixer, and I'm not understanding why it's taking so long for them to give me back my letter to say what's going on.
Okay, we will have someone contact you direct directly to address your issue. We will have a member of the NYCHA team contact you directly. We have your email address to address your issue. Okay, next we have Natalie Goodwin.
Sorry, trying to unmute. Thank you. Good evening. Actually, you have El Ruby Thomas. Natalie has helped, my sister has helped me get on the meeting. Thank you. Good evening this evening, everyone. My name is El Ruby Thomas, and I live in Taft Houses. Now, I know a lot of people here have Taft Houses have a certain mindset about that process, that particular development. What I'm here to talk about is very much the same as everyone else. On a scale of levels of time, this has been going on. This is not new. I have to agree with the young lady who spoke earlier, where we must get resident engagement, not just from the city, but from within housing. The answer is not going to be outside of our residency. It's going to be the residents from within that are going to have to step up more so on a larger level together. Now, I'm not absolving the government from its responsibilities toward our, toward our development and its tenants, because that's first and foremost. We are, have the right to live as human beings and be respected. I don't care if you pay a dollar or you pay $1,000 for your apartment. You have the right to live in clean, healthy conditions. You know, I did place my complaint in this area, but we've been given a lot of excuses about COVID for basic needs that are actually counteracting the COVID movement in just maintaining and repairing. So it kind of works both ways. It works as a negative and a positive, I should say. Whereas we understand COVID is going on, but you have, we have got to be maintained anyway. The answer is not to make an excuse of it. So if we could get some more, I guess, more work, working together between the management of our services for our building and maybe, you know, the tenants being more proactive together, we could see some change in all of this. And actually, that's something I personally have been putting into place myself. Just trying, because I take responsibility for my apartment, and I ask my neighbors to please join in that. So, you know, I've been out here fighting a good fight for several years with, with, from Action Group to Association. But we're going to need to come together as a community and make this happen on our own. As far as connected services for training to help people maintain their homes, that was written into the NYCHA law, and it has not been actually enacted throughout time. It actually has been dwindling over time. So getting people in NYCHA, helping to preserve NYCHA, made more sense, but it actually has been downplayed, and I have to agree. There has to be a separate plan going on because there's no reason this stuff is actually not able to happen successively with all of the activities that have been going on with groups around us. I thank you, and I hope that I do get an invitation to that next meeting, and I would like to continue to invite others to come talk. Have a good day.
Definitely. Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Next, we have Catherine Gladcliff.
Hello, my name is actually Stan Moss. I may, I may be signed up under Catherine's name, but my name is Stan Moss. I'm the lead organizer for the Justice for All Coalition. We work in Queensbridge, Ravenswood, Astoria Houses, as well as other developments around the city. And in all of my conversations with residents in all of those developments, I would say a very minute amount of them understand what this program is about. So it's incredible, and it's criminal to push a program upon the residents that none of them know anything about, really. And beyond that, we deal with a lot of elected officials, you know, a lot of the city council people we speak to, and also Congress folks we speak to, very little of them know what this plan is all about or can't explain it. You know, so if our elected officials can't explain it, and the residents don't know about it, then why are we pushing it through in such a manner as this? And I think it's incredible, it's insensitive, and it should be stopped. And then the bigger question is with this, is that what if there's defaulting the loan? There's no mechanism in place. There's no elected official, there's no government, nothing in place to come to the aid or rescue if these bills are not paid by NYCHA and they default on the loan. So if that were to happen, then NYCHA is done. Private, public housing is done. You know, so how are you going to put something together when there's no safeguards involved in it? You know, where all the residents are really asking for repairs, which is part of this plan, is called absolutes, which is allowing the developments in the apartments to go into disrepair on purpose. They had to reach a certain level of disrepair to even be considered for this program. So that in and of itself, when people are literally dying during COVID-19 and dying before that from the lack of repairs, is even more criminal. You know, so when you look at it all, end of the day, this is a grab for the land, this is a grab for money. You put together a trust where four residents, four NYCHA residents are on it that is selected by the mayor and 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 Gregory Russ. You know, so what kind of representation is that when they are the minority on a board or a trust, you know, in 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 that actually will decide their life and their fate in their apartments? You know, so there's no real power there, and the engagement to the community has been a joke, an absolute joke. If most, a lot of the meetings are not in, are only in English, you know, so for those residents to speak other languages, they're totally excluded from this process. I mean, they're not involved at all. You know, so how can this be representative of NYCHA residents and deemed to be for the benefit of NYCHA residents when very, very little of them have any say-so, any involvement, or even about the plan at all, including our elected officials? So we're calling for more of a turn on all of this. There should be a complete pause until we come out of this pandemic and have some real community engagement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moss. I just want to clarify that all of our meetings, we do offer language interpretation and also invite you to attend one of the blueprint webinars to learn more. Thank you. We have Joshua Barnett.
Is the microphone working?
Yes, it is.
Thanks very much. Sorry for the problem before. My name is Josh Barnett. I'm a member of Local 375, DC 37 ASME, president of Chapter 25. I'm also an architect in the design department. I've been there since 99. Like many of my coworkers at NYCHA around the city, I've been working remotely at home since March. The transition plan, including the Blueprint for Change and the proposed housing trust, all sound really good. But the internal reorganization is nothing we haven't heard years before, such as Next Gen, and doesn't really address the top-heavy management culture that has existed at NYCHA for years. But more importantly, both RAD and PAC and the Public Housing Trust actually increased the ongoing privatization that has been draining public housing and public services around the country for a really long time. It's important to look not only what the plan says, but what it doesn't say. As NYCHA workers, we have serious questions about how civil service positions or ongoing union contracts will be maintained or honored under RAD and PAC and the blueprint without the plan creating low-paying, non-union jobs instead, which would underserve the residents. When I started at NYCHA, there were almost 16,000 employees. We're down to under 12,000 now, and it's hard to see how the plan would reverse that. My chapter, which represents architects, engineers, and other technical titles, had almost 450 members in 99. We're down to 215. There's been some hiring recently, which is welcome, but in capital projects, we have dozens of consultants working in NYCHA cubicles at great expense. In 2004, NYCHA started hiring private firms to oversee capital construction projects. 16 years later, we still don't have data on how effective the program is, even though it cost NYCHA tremendous amount. And RAD PACs only exacerbated the problem. As one example, we've been working on a huge project at Holland River Houses, $44 million renovations. We had spent a year and probably 5,000 hours on that project, but when it was decided that Holland River was going converted to RAD, all that work was literally put on the shelf, and our private firm started from scratch. The SCA model is highly problematic as a basis for the blueprint, but it should be noted that SCA is required to keep 40% of their design work in-house as a stopgap against privatization, a feature of SCA NYCHA has not chosen to incorporate in their plan. The repairs that are covered by the transition plan are obviously desperately needed by the residents. We know we're dealing with 40 years of cuts to public housing, a huge deficit, but private funds always come with strings attached. RAD has already led to a rise in evictions in cities such as Baltimore, San Francisco, Raleigh, and yes, Minneapolis. NYCHA needs to advocate for alternate funding streams from the city, state, and HUD, such as decreased private contracts, increased taxes on the rich, and decreased subsidies for luxury development. We really can't go this route. As bad as the situation is, infill RAD Public Housing Trust are really a poison pill for losing public housing. The money is there. NYCHA needs to advocate it on behalf of the staff and the residents. We need to keep public housing public. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Annette Tomlin.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, good evening, and thank you so much for having this forum. My concern is that we are already dealing with enough people that are homeless. And because of the homelessness crisis and also the seniors, where are people supposed to be relocating? We have over 400 supposedly thousands of people that live in NYCHA housing, and I'm not understanding any of this here. I'm glad that you're having the forum again, but we do definitely need more, you know, explanations of exactly what's going on in the whole process. So what are we supposed to be doing here? Okay, and again, also, how long did you actually have this plan? Because, you know, it seems like all of a sudden you're just like one, two, three, and you're ready to go forward, and I'm not understanding any of this process. So can someone actually give you some information about that?
Yes, so thank you, Ms. Tomlin. The plan was released over the summer, in August, and we have been engaging on this plan since July. I will send you a link so that you can join one of our upcoming webinars, and you can learn more about the plan so that you can understand it, you can ask questions. We definitely want to continue to engage with you. So thank you. So thank you. Um, our next speaker is over the phone and the last four numbers are 6097. Please unmute yourself. 6097, the last four digits of your phone number. Please unmute yourself and announce, um, your name and your affiliation and you may speak. And I want to read out your whole number for the public. Last four numbers of your phone number are 6097. You can unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Okay, good, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, yes, my number is six, yes, my number is 6097. I'm from the Bushwick.
Can you give us your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Crystal Christian. I live in Hope Gardens and the Bushwick section. And we, and I'm listening to what's going on because I have family members that live in Tompkins Housing, which I was raised there. And I just wanted to let people know that, um, when you say a blueprint, we was never taught a group, a blueprint down here. Now, if you Google Pitt Rose, that's who's down here fixing our buildings and stuff. Yes, everybody in line said this needs fixing, that needs fixing, this needs fixing. Yes, they're gonna fix it, but for what cause? Okay, I have been to every meeting, I have not missed one meeting since they started from restoration up to now. They're doing our buildings. I'm gonna talk a little slower so everybody can understand me because I'm going through this, which you are gonna be going through. All these meetings, all this talk, you're talking, yes, you definitely need to stick together. Now, they, they fixing the buildings, they fixing everything that needs to be done, from the roof to the parking lot, to the door, that's just changed, everything. But they're not letting the tenants know that the, the voucher they giving us, you're on probation for a year, number one. Number two is that, that the probation is if you pay your rent on time, okay? The second thing is you could take the voucher after a year if they approve of it to anywhere you want to go. The third thing is, is that they, they fixing the buildings and stuff, but they're not telling you that when we certify for housing, we gotta certify two times for New York Housing and Pitt Rose, okay? As I work on two jobs, one job I lost. We supposed to come and let them know when our income have got short. When my income got short, yes, I have children on that lives for me, yes, they all work. But it doesn't, it doesn't help me. It does not help me because my income is only going down a hundred dollars from 1,500 to let everybody know, okay? I, I want you to feel what I'm going through as a mother, that all my children are working. Nobody's helping the senior citizens. Everybody scared down here, everybody fall in line. Yes, I've been to all the meetings, the things that they are doing, yes, they do move you out when they fix your apartment. They'll find you a place in the residence, that they'll move you to their fix your apartment, and then they will bring you back. Yes, you will, yes, you will sign, you will sign a, 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 a paper that say that the housing thing is gonna stay low income, not affordable. Make sure if you do sign it, low income. They gonna move regardless if you have these meetings or not, because this is how they coming in. Blueprint, what blueprint? They've been having this for a long time, but they just letting you know about it.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Annette Tomlin. Annette Tomlin, you may unmute yourself. Okay, we'll move on to Jessie Rivera.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
I'm just, I'm just actually trying to reach out and see where I can actually get more involved because I was with my mom. She lived here in housing in the Leland Warhouses for 30 years. And I had to move in with her because obviously she got older and sick. And while I was here, I had to do all these complaints and go into the office and call the 718 number. And I actually helped her, but there's a lot of senior citizens that don't have a me around. And that's who I worry about. So, you know, it's, it's like, I want, I want, I wanna be more proactive with people. And if I can, if somebody could reach out to me and let me know what I can do to help other senior citizens that they don't go through what my mom went through alone, that would be, I would definitely be appreciated. And, you know, according to all the rats and everything, I mean, it's, you know, shouldn't be, that's uncalled for. So I just want to leave it at that. And again, if somebody can reach out to me, um, you can, I actually give them my email. I don't know how that works. I'm not gonna give it out there.
Yeah, we will definitely connect with you. We have your email address.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay.
Okay, our next speaker is Chantel Brooks. Chantel Brooks. Please unmute yourself. You may speak.
Um, so there's been a number of things. I just wanted to point out that NITIA needs a better representation as far as, um, represent, representatives for tenants. Um, they do better with tenants during the pandemic. There are tenants who have family members who have passed away. And because their name is not on the air being, that they have to leave the apartment during the pandemic, which is crazy. Um, one of the questions I had was how would RAD individuals in homeless shelters and EV shelters? Um, they definitely need to improve their selection process. Um, there's a lot of people that have been on the waiting list, especially people in shelters. Um, and some can focus on home, on home ownership programs, um, for opportunities for individuals so they can move out of these apartments and so that the apartments are not being passed down through generations. Um, and there's a lot of profit base going on, and it seems like they're forgetting about the tenant. Um, all doesn't seem like the information is being easily accessible for the tenants in these NITIA developments. Um, the, if I, someone commented on this earlier. If there's a way or program where, um, people in these apartments can preserve go through programs learning how to preserve the apartments, there wouldn't be so many issues with the apartments. Um, and there's not a lot being advertised about residents.
Thank you. Thank you. Chantel, I'm sorry. Debbie Stoller?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for giving me a chance to testify. My name is Debbie Stoller, and I'm here as a representative of Voice Gowanus, of Gowanus Coalition of Organizations who are opposed to the current plan to rezone the entire Gowanus neighborhood. I grew up in NITIA housing in Canarsie, Brooklyn, and today I live in Gowanus, Brooklyn. The plan to create a public-private partnership to deal with financial issues surrounding NITIA is wrong-headed, unfair, and must be rejected. NITIA and its residents deserve nothing less than full funding for its repairs using public taxpayer dollars, as it always has been. People who live there deserve to live in clean, healthy, safe housing as much as anyone else. This entire proposal, to me, sounds like it is rooted in corruption and doesn't benefit NITIA at all. It does, however, stand to benefit politicians. I want to tell you a story from Gowanus so that you can understand how this works. The city and state claim that they have no money to pay for what is needed. And therefore, they need to partner with private corporations and investors to raise the necessary funds for NITIA. But what they neglect to tell you is that the city and state are currently offering billions of dollars in tax cuts and tax payouts to developers of luxury housing towers to house ultra-wealthy New Yorkers. And it is some of those developers who they want to allow under this plan to purchase air rights from NITIA buildings in order, basically, to buy people's silence. Our council member Brad Lander in Gowanus
I'd like to tell you is that the city and state are currently
I'm sorry, myself now. Um, our, our council member Brad Lander in Gowanus is working very hard behind the scenes to get exactly this sort of deal done with one of the many wealthy developers who want to build dozens of luxury apartment towers as part of the enormous Gowanus rezone. But 25% of residents in Gowanus live in NITIA housing. And Brad Lander understands that this is a big problem for him, since he's trying to sell the community on the idea that this rezone is gonna increase diversity in the neighborhood and that he's really only doing it to benefit lower-income people in our community. Of course, that's complete nonsense. Brad Lander wants to appease these wealthy developers so that they'll support his upcoming comptroller run and maybe after that mayor. But if NITIA residents are opposed to his rezone, that's not a good look for him. So he's working with wealthy developers to convince them to purchase air rights and throw some money NITIA's way so that he can say the rezone benefits NITIA tenants as well. But of course, those developers are getting huge tax breaks and tax payouts. So it's really our public money that's going to NITIA, not even theirs. Nothing about this rezone in Gowanus is good for NITIA. Bringing 20,000 ultra-wealthy people to the neighborhood, 10 times the number who live there now will just displace, if not, NITIA residents themselves and the services that they rely on. Forcing NITIA residents to live alongside construction for the next 10 to 20 years while toxic land is disturbed right across the street from them to build housing for rich people is not good for NITIA. I stand in solidarity with NITIA residents and my old neighborhoods in Canarsie in opposing the proposed blueprint and privatization of NITIA. And I also want to mention that Mr. Russ himself receives a $400,000 annual salary, which comes out to $1 for every current NITIA resident. I don't trust him at all to
Uh, thank you, Ms., um, Stoller. Our next speaker is Paula Siegel.
Hi, um, my name is Paula Siegel. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you so much. I'm speaking today as senior staff attorney in the Equitable Neighborhoods Practice of Take Root Justice. Take Root Justice is a nonprofit legal services organization that works with grassroots groups, neighborhood organizations, and community coalitions to help make sure that people of color, immigrants, and other low-income residents who've built our city are not pushed out in the name of progress. Uh, we work closely with public housing residents and, uh, organizers who work with residents. And we're here to comment on NITIA's draft plans for the coming year. The draft annual plan includes a summary of the proposed blueprint for change and Public Housing Preservation Trust in its executive summary. While we do not consider this to be a part of the actual annual plan, no detail is provided, and therefore, its inclusion in the plan does not satisfy any of NITIA's regulatory requirements. We do want to take the opportunity to explain our opposition to the proposal. Fundamentally, the trust proposal represents an attempt to radically change the structure of NITIA under a cover of a national emergency. No public hearings are being held in person, and no residents have the opportunity to testify in person, consult their neighbors in person, or do any of the public engagement activities that require close contact. Um, this year's draft annual plan also continues NITIA's steady march towards privatizing New York City's public housing without any adequate opportunity for resident participation through, uh, the privatization efforts that, uh, started several years ago. Private is, the authority should not allow privatization under any name to move forward without consultation and consent of the affected residents. NITIA's practice of beginning resident and consultation only after NITIA has determined where the development or disposition will occur does not allow for resident control and should be eliminated. NITIA's choice to repeatedly proclaim that the trust, or RAD, or PACT is not a process of privatization, is a form of gaslighting. Our clients and colleagues clearly see that the transfer of management and or ownership to private entities is a form of pub, taking public housing out of the realm of public provision of a public good and services. Finally, the draft plan clearly states that HUD is concerned, considering NITIA's applications for Section 8 conversions of, conversions of eight specific campuses, where NITIA actually earlier this year already announced via press release that these campuses would be converted and named the developers they would be working with. This undermines the spirit of oversight and of this public hearing and of the annual plan process entirely. Uh, NITIA is only now seeking permission from HUD to do something that NITIA proclaimed in February was a done deal. Further, expanding the RAD pipeline while marketing the blueprint is, is confusing. The draft annual plan names 20 new campuses that were not included last year in RAD and PACT. This balkanization of NITIA residents into different groups is, undermines resident power.
Thank you, Ms. Siegel. Casita Peters?
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Casita Peters. Um, I'm in this meeting to hear about information about what NITIA's plan for us and every, and what we as tenants. Um, however, it's disappointing that I cannot see the representative faces and that they are, they have closed off them. Because how do I know that they are, are observing and really listening to what is being said tonight? I don't even know if they're in there, in, in front of their, their devices, listening, or if they're just in another room and they're just, and they're just making us just speak to our own microphones and to each other. It's disrespectful and it's dishonest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Um, just so you know, I'm not sure if you were referring to the board members. If you scroll, they are on camera and this, um, hearing is being recorded. It will be, it's being livestreamed. It will be available on our website. And we have a stenographer transcribing it, so we are hearing every comment and documenting it. Okay, we have a request, uh, from Metin Sarci. However, I don't see your name and I'm not sure if you are dialing in from a phone number. If you are, please press star nine to raise your hand so that I may call on you. Metin Sarci? Okay, uh, last four numbers, 9778, you may speak.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, is this Metin?
Yeah, this is correct. Uh, hi, good evening. Thank you. Hi, good evening. I, I, I just wanted to speak. I, I, I've been involved in NITIA for about eight years in terms of, uh, being advocate in terms of being, um, out into the communities that I serve. And I, I can't tell you if this is the right plan for NITIA. I can't tell you, uh, you know, if this is the all be all. But I think the most appalling thing today was, I'm, 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 I don't know if anybody, anybody else was at this assembly hearing today, but I'm, I'm, I'm constantly hearing, you know, from our state politicians about, you know, how much they know of their failure to provide funds to NITIA. They know of their failure to do, uh, pass any meaningful legislation, but they certainly have time to talk about the transformation plan, to talk about how this is the wrong plan, the plan that NITIA is now proposing. And I can't tell you if it's right or wrong, but it is something that NITIA is proposing when I'm not seeing the same leadership come from our elected officials. And it kind of seems, uh, you know, all, you know, now they're, they're saying that there's a supermajority in the Senate. I'm really hoping that if our elected officials are coming out here and saying that they want to improve public housing, that they actually take the advantage that they have right now in the state. Uh, if they do not agree with it, with the current proposals in place, that they actually do something on their end. Because for too long, since the Pataki time period, when, uh, funds to operating and capital funding, uh, to NITIA was cut off, particularly to all the mixed finance developments that were under and created by state funding, is now leading to NITIA to create a result in which they have to find funding or pull funding from other developments in order to create these, make these things, uh, functional, which they're not. So I, I just wanted to make that, that comment. Um, I, I was actually, it, I find it appalling that elected officials are, up until now, figuring out that this is a plan when the, um, Chairman Ross first presented this plan on July 28th at the, uh, New York Housing Conference. I'm a layman. I'm not an elected official. I do not have access to government powers like they do. So to find out that me, as a regular person, is finding out back in July, when you have these elected officials were on, on their live streaming saying that they are just figuring that, that this is just coming out, or they found out maybe two weeks ago, it, it's just kind of unacceptable. And I, I don't blame NITIA for that. I, I do blame our, our leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Barber.
Good day, everybody. Um, today, I previously testified at the State Assembly Hearing on the Blueprint Plan for Change. I was I was given clarity to the residents of public housing that as the citywide councilor president's chair, although the conversation has been going on with the Housing Authority, we have not supported this action and we are not pushing for it to go forward in any way. But my statement I need to make for this record is as a person living in a democratic society, you should be able to choose and go any way that you wish to go. Because you do not agree with something that people put up and people put out. It should not be at the privy of that individual to try to bully you or force you to accept their way of thinking. The residents will not be bullied by the New York City Housing Authority to accept the Blueprint Plan for Change. The residents showed the New York City Housing Authority that enough was enough when we went to court, which the process brought us, Bart Schwartz, the federal monitor. We will not be bullied and we will not be pushed and forced to go with what the Housing Authority wants us to go with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Annette Tomlin. Mr. Ian raised again to speak. Annette Tomlin, would you like to speak again? Okay, if anybody who has not spoken would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Hello?
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Tomlin.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, my other question was, I actually had put it down in the question comment thing as well. When we, I live in Brook Ellen Houses, okay? So we recently had got a capital money allocated to us and they was doing these roofs. But now that they did that, and they were saying that they was going to do some remodeling. In the process of them doing the remodeling and someone else spoke, where are we going to be actually staying? Are they going to house us somewhere else? Has that plan actually came about? So I'm not understanding the question as well.
Okay, so it's early on in the planning process. If you're referring, if you're referring to a blueprint, please attend one of our upcoming webinars. There is one tomorrow at 10:00 AM and then one on December 17th. And you'll get more information and you'll also be able to have a Q and A exchange. So I would invite you to that. We have Karen Blondell.
Yes, thank you. I just have a question because I thought that tonight's hearing was not just specific to the blueprint, but also about an amendment or any amendments that took place in the 2020 fiscal plan and also the 2021 plan. And so I just want to make note that we don't know, like you can put that plan out, but we don't talk about those things in resident council. So there's no exchange of ideas. There's no conversation around what the residents actually think what should be prioritized in each development. Because what they need, like in Brownsville or in the Bronx, might be different from what we need in Red Hook. Red Hook has bathroom windows. That helps with some of the mold and the ventilation processes that we need. There are other developments that are waiting for roof fans. And so we want to be able to understand what the capital budget is, how it's being spent on a local level so that we can project our voices up to C-COP and up to HUD and up to our electeds. That's the way the process has to work. If we don't get to do these processes on the ground, we will never come to any consensus in public housing that actually creates the power base that residents should have and could have. So I just want to point that out as an organizer around the Gowanus Neighborhood Coalition for Justice, where there is an 80-block rezoning that is slated to start year up on January 19th. In the middle of a pandemic, we are saying that at a minimum, we want upfront funding for public housing in that area where these new market rate luxury units, as well as some affordable quotation units are going to be. We still want those people who've been living in Wykoff and Gowanus to be brought into stabilization. One way from the blueprint, I mean, excuse me, from the court order, taking care of the mold and the lead, and then the other way from the ground up with upfront funding for Wykoff and Gowanus. They deserve that when we're in an opportunity zone and when all of these tax breaks are going to people who are rezoning industrial areas into residential areas, saying they want to help with housing homelessness and all of this. How could you say that and still leave public housing residents who migrated here from 1916 to 1970 from the South of North America up here? How could you continue to treat descendants of slaves the way you treat us? And we're demanding upfront money. Thank you.
Next, we have Kristi Yanis. Kristi Yanis, please unmute yourself.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
I'm, I came in, how you doing? How you doing? Thank you. I came in late to the meeting. So I wasn't sure if this question was asked. And I wanted to know when the regular repairs will be back in place. There's one repair that's really of concern because we have gas pipe that's been vibrating at a certain time every night. And so I just wanted to know when the regular repairs will be back in place so that someone can handle that because it's really concerning.
So Ms. Yanis, what development do you live in?
Bruch.
Bruch, okay. We'll have someone contact you directly? Okay. Next, we have Alde Fonder. Adelaide Fonder. Adelaide Fonder, you can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, I have a couple of comments. The first one is, this program doesn't seem like it benefits those who have nothing. Okay, it's apparent that many people don't know anything about the blueprint and those who do have a limited understanding of it. It's a known fact that New York City Housing Authority is a great investment, has always been. And only those who have money can afford to invest in it at any cost. If you look around the city, you see all these new buildings that they are putting up. But who's living there? And what was there before those buildings were built? So now that they have no more space or no more places to build, they want to take New York City housing? So those who can't afford to live anywhere else will soon be homeless? We have too many homeless people. They're trying to put more money into shelters than places for people to live. This blueprint, where, you said it came about in July, but with the pandemic going on, so many people were not concerned about that. They were concerned about their health, the livelihood. And so you want to put this plan in now when people don't really have the opportunity to get involved in all of this. Most people are concerned about, you know, living, not being sick, not going out. And as so many people have mentioned earlier, a lot of people don't have access to technology. And then the elderly, who's going to support them? So they probably have no idea about this blueprint. And when it comes to signing papers, who's going to support them? Are we supposed to trust these people to help them, to help us? They've never helped us before, so what's the point? That's basically my comments for right now. I don't think it's a good plan at this time to bring it into fruition now when people are just trying to get through this pandemic situation. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fonder. Our next speaker is Bernice Tilery.
Ah, yes, Ms. Fonder and Ms. Blondell. The point is, it's business as usual, as another person said. And it's imperative that we fight for what we have and what we need. I have, Ms. Blondell, the draft for the PHA agency plan for 2018 fiscal year, 2018 and 2019. They are made available to the Tenant Association via the Management Office. But in 2020, in this pandemic, I haven't been in the Management Office. I emailed the manager asking her if they were there, and I haven't gotten an answer for her. There are people on the ground like Mr. Barber that's been fighting this fight for over a decade. Thank you, Mr. Barber. But now it's time for us all to truly get with Mr. Barber and get with each other because these are our homes. Translation, this is my life. And I'm not willing to leave it up to anyone without knowing face to face. If you're going to cut my throat, you're going to have to do it from the front. You're not going to be able to stab me in the back. Enough is enough. We have got to get together and work together because I have the draft significant amendment to the annual PHA plan for fiscal year 2018 and 19. But I need 2020 because it's been business as usual and I don't have the paperwork. I, I just might download all of the 191 pages and I'm just emailing Gil Brewer's office as this meeting is going on. It's imperative to me. It's no longer just conversation. Even though we can't meet and gather for fear of our health, they've been doing this since 2019. So I need to catch up so that I can fight face to face for my home and my life.
Thank you, Ms. Tilery. Next speaker is Maria Wells.
Yes, yes, good, yes, my name is, yes, good evening, everybody. I just want to ask a, actually two questions. Number one, this plan, this so-called plan, this blue, blue plan, change plan, whatever you want to call it, it's over, what, 300 pages or under 300 pages? That's number one. Number two, will I be able to get it, get it at the Management's Office? Number three, I'm kind of concerned about people that don't have certain things like having Wi-Fi and stuff like that. People don't really know about this. I'm just really finding out about this. That's the reason what brought me into this meeting tonight. And so I am just really concerned. How will this, when will this? First of all, I don't think it's a good idea to have this done in a pandemic. A lot of brothers and sisters that have been on here have been talking about that. I don't think it's a good idea. Yeah, it may sound good. It may sound this, that, and other. But at the same time, you're not thinking about people's health. You know, a lot of people going through a lot right now. There's no consideration. And the vibes I'm getting right now, it's like, it's not good. I don't mind reading a bunch of paper, but the sad part about it is that do the community know? Do a lot of people know about this? Are there a lot of people on here? You know? You know, I mean, a lot of people going through a rough time right now, especially now that it's the holidays. You know, it scares me and it concerns me. Like I said, and I'll repeat it again, I don't mind reading the paperwork. It's going to make me think and wonder about this. I'm scared. I'm concerned. How will this affect me and my family? You understand what I'm saying? So, you know, I understand this is under three minutes, but is it possible I could get these questions answered? You know, what time is this thing? You say you're having the Blueprint webinar tomorrow. That's kind of like at the last minute, the 17th maybe. But if you can't make it, would it be, what is it, livestream where you could be able to see if, if you miss it? How many hours is it going to be? Is it under two hours? Could you give me the breakdown of all of this? Because I don't really understand about, I did see the lecture, the PowerPoint and everything, but at the same time, it's like, I feel like I'm in a limbo right now. It's kind of concerning me. You know, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You had a lot of questions that I want to address because they keep coming up. So tonight is our annual plan public hearing along with the significant amendment, separate from the blueprint plan that has been referenced. So there are two separate tracks, even though there is blueprint information that contains an annual plan. So tonight, we're taking comments on Nycha's annual plan, which has been, the draft has been published. And this evening, all of the testimony and comments will be included and before everything is finalized and submitted to HUD later this month. So that's the annual plan. Separately, the blueprint print is a plan that is also available on Nycha's website. What we have been engaging on since the summer is the blueprint. So we've had a number of webinars. We've had small group meetings. We've had a number of tenant engagement meetings to have discussions about the blueprint, and we'll continue to have that. So I want to make clear to everybody on this here tonight that yes, we are 2020 dealing with this pandemic, but the blueprint is not a done deal. It is a process that was started and launched over the summer. We're in the engagement process now and we will continue through the engagement process. And along the way, and even prior to the launch of the blueprint, we have been collecting ideas, comments, commentary. I heard one speaker say that the Bronx is different from Brooklyn and so forth. We are collecting all of that information. So anytime that you join in on a webinar or have a discussion with us, we are collecting that information and we see that information as valuable. So please, I will send out the links for tomorrow. It's the same content, same information. We'll also have another one on the 17th. I'm certain that we'll have additional conversations as residents have more interest. We put forth more information. We're engaging constantly. So I just want to clarify that for everybody on the phone. Our next speaker is Clove. May I unmute yourself? Clove? We can hear you if you still want to speak. Clove?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. I'm living, I'm Clover Moore. I'm living in Williamburg, Alvin. And I just want to say I did not hear about the blueprint. And I would like to know more about the blueprint. I'm a singer and I have glaucoma. I can't go on the website to download nothing, so you could email me and let me get more information about it. And my next thing again, I have a hole in my bathroom. They came here day before Thanksgiving. And they go and change the pipe because I live on the fourth floor. I have asthma and I have glaucoma, shortness of breath. They leave a big hole. The paper that they put there, the heat in the bathroom is letting it harm. The tape melt. And I would like somebody to come and fix it because I have a lot of mold there. All the kitchen and the bathroom. both, both the kitchen and the bathroom. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Clove, what development do you live in?
Williamsburg.
Williamsburg, okay, we got it. So we will have someone reach out to you directly, um, to provide assistance.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Okay, we have, um, Tanisha Harris, who is the next, is asked to speak again. Tanisha Harris?
Yes, hi, good evening. I'm from the, the Monhaven Houses in the Bronx. And I too came in a little late. I, I joined you, I believe, about 6:30. So I'm a little unsure of the, what is this, the annual, the Blueprint Annual Plan? How well ever, yes?
We're, we are here for the annual plan, um, public hearing.
Okay. For me, um, I'm a working tenant. I think 90% of NITRA now are working tenants. Um, the rent is extremely high for the quality of life we are living in. When you put in a ticket and you get, we can't honor that ticket due to COVID. But yet and still, you have people coming out to test the lead. You have people that have plumbing issues, holes in their apartments, rodents all over the place. But you got people to come out to test lead. Our rent cannot be late, but we can't get anybody to service anything in our apartment. The changes that NITRA is planning or making sounds good, really good, if they uphold it. It's not just what NITRA is planning. Our tenants also have to uphold their end of the deal. I'm quite sure we all signed agreements when coming in and signing our lease. We was happy to get in here. But then for some reason down the line, the tenants forget where they're living at and it becomes slums. I didn't sign up to, to live in a slump. I don't care how long NITRA's been here. I don't care what all the residents are saying about how, um, they're not honoring what they're supposed to be honoring with the tenants. What are the tenants supposed to be honoring towards each other? We got people in our development that don't even care about each other. How are you expecting them to care about us? Again, my rent for where I'm living at is extremely high. These apartment buildings that's coming up are extremely high in rent. We can't afford these. It's like, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. It, it has to be a better way. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harris. Our next speaker is Maria Forbes. Ms. Forbes, if you can unmute yourself. Maria Forbes. Okay, we'll move on. Ms. Forbes, if you, um, come back, you can raise your hand. Uh, next we have Latoya Clark.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, I've been listening to everyone. Um, I've actually, um, been to a few. Actually, I think I've been to almost every, um, webinar or Zoom that you guys have, sorry, that you guys have conducted um, since the summertime. Um, I also heard a lot of feedback from, um, other residents that a lot of, maybe our older residents, um, which is, which is true, um, that might not have, you know, access or opportunity to, um, actually attend some of these, um, actual, uh, webinars. Maybe some type of, um, I don't know, maybe some type of campaign on NITRA's part. I don't know who will be in charge of that. If there's something like, um, I noticed, for instance, a, an example, when the census was being held, you had some census workers that were knocking from door to door, trying to get people to sign up or register in regards to the census. Maybe something like that could be put in place, um, for the older residents or just residents in general that might not have access to internet or Wi-Fi, things of that nature, so they're able to join in. And I also agree with some of the other residents. I think it takes, um, it takes the part of NITRA as well as the tenants, um, because they can fix a lot of things, um, put a lot of things in place. But if we as tenants, um, you know, if we don't actually get together and let's say just the upkeep of our apartments or upkeep of the buildings. And just like you said, you have certain conditions where people are living where, you know, there's spit, there's, uh, people are defecating, things of that nature in hallways, lobbies. Um, also, there are certain ma- maintenance workers that are not working as hard as others that are actually hired and work in the building. So I think there's a lot of issues that, um, you know, clearly that we need to address, um, even though this pact or Blueprint for Change goes into place. Um, but I think, I guess the first part was to actually get everyone engaged, maybe a campaign on NITRA's part to get more people engaged. I think the, just the emails alone and the automatic calls that come through are maybe not enough for some of our actual residents. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Next, we have Shelley Belton. Shelley Belton, you may unmute yourself.
Okay, do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, um, I am from Mariners Harbor, um, the, on the Forgotten Borough, Staten Island. The problem is, is, is NITRA, okay? NITRA doesn't respect us as tenants. And they have people who work for them who don't respect us as tenants, and they give them the green light to do so. And unfortunately, they have been getting away with this for many and many, many years. Back in the days, they did have us separated racially, okay? The vanilla people here, Spanish people here, um, black people here, Chinese people here. And even though they say they're not doing that anymore, it still exists. But we have to come together as tenants and work together and not think that just because we're living here that we don't deserve this. We deserve a better place to live. And the, the management, they get away with putting us through changes because if they like you, they let you get away, um, uh, away with things. But if they don't like, like you, then they don't do anything for you. You could have a problem with another, um, tenant and nothing is done. You could have a, a problem in your, in your boat, and they don't do anything about it. But you could see that they're doing something when they want to move, uh, another tenant out and put, um, an, an, another person in there, and then they'll, um, fix that place up. There is too much happening here that we should have control over and them, and them not controlling us. We have to stick together, not only in Staten Island, but all boroughs. And not just leave it up to the tenant presidents or leaders or whatever you want to call them, but you have to include, um, include all other tenants and, and not say that, you know what? It's, it's our way or no way. We have the power. We just have to stick together and know that we have the power. Okay, that's all I have to say. Peace.
Thank you, Ms. Belton. Mary McClary? Mary McClary?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Uh, I'm a NITRA resident and have been for many years. I've also been very actively involved in the community, um, around housing. I'm not as up to date as I would like to be on the Blueprint, so I'm going to, um, reserve comment on that until I can, uh, catch up. But my main concern during this pandemic has been quality of life issues. And it seems to have, I, I'm seeing less housing maintenance workers on the grounds. And I don't understand why certain things, I am, I, I know that as far as going into the homes, but the grounds, uh, when we need to get outside sometimes and get some fresh air and just be able to sit on the benches on the property. They have not been cleaned, they are filthy. And you have to actually clean it yourself or, uh, take something to cover the space. So I'm wondering, I would, would have expected things to shift. Um, and I have observed that. Also, the, uh, the garbage, especially in front of the buildings, um, on the grounds. That situation is getting worse. And again, I agree with my fellow, uh, tenants who, uh, who talk about the responsibility of the tenants themselves. I certainly agree with that. My rent is extremely high and it increases every year. And since I have lived, uh, in public housing, I found that NITRA does not enforce the rules and regulations that they place in our lease. And I, these are things that I would like to see done. Before we talk about moving on and, and doing other things, these are things that need to be handled now, especially now during this pandemic. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. McClary. What development do you live in? Okay, we will contact you directly. Next, we have Maria Forbes.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, Janelle, you look beautiful. I haven't seen you in so long.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes, how are you?
I would like to say I'm quite concerned on the Rad Act level of this application because if we weren't able to get anything addressed as far as repairs was concerned, how could we be moving forward with such a complex issue of having a developer come in and do major repairs, such as removing windows, bathrooms, kitchens, and rebuilding part of the apartment? Because I'll jump on the other half of that. Because all we need to do every day to every second, the governor and the mayor is talking about shut down this, shut down that, that how could you open up tenants' apartments who are living already in humane conditions and continue to open them without? I don't even know. I don't even know how to explain it, that you would just open up some apartments and we could go into a full major shutdown again. But my other concern is not addressing what's going on behind the wall. From the very beginning, since 2016, you know, I'm one of the writers on the Resident Handbook, that the, the plumbing, the subflooring, as well as the electrical upgrades that are needed in these apartments are not going to be addressed through this Rad Impact. And when you tell me you got a 20-year to 99-year lease with them, I've already been subjected to private management pulling out. We were that when we got turned over to public housing. We were private management, turned over to public housing already, and the floors was already in the bare condition as well as the windows to the whole apartment. But we've been in existence now 35 years and it's not withholding or sustaining what's going on. So I would really like to know why Vito would not talk to me, let alone Gregory Russ would not talk to me, or this development concerning the repairs that need to be upgraded and addressed now before you even move on to such a thing as Rad Impact? My other concern is that, what are you going to do to repairs for Rad Impact but not do the repairs because we live here? I don't understand it. And we have to stop some of the social distancing of video talking and have the staff come out. There's enough locations to hold social distance because 250 Broadway do them. So just the same way they opened up Hudson Senior Center, I think Vito and Russ need to get up here and come to meet the Tenant Association Presidents for Clearmont Consolidated.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Our last speaker for the evening is Tamika Hicks.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, yes, um, I was, I'm so, I, I'm actually from a development in the Bronx, um, one of the consolidations. And I wanted to like make a comment on some things because I actually was basically a victim of them trying to repair my apartment from the mold and all the mildew. Did was, they were, well, they started the repairs around November 2nd. And that's had congressmen contact, um, the borough management offices because my manager, I actually took, did an HP action in court against them. And it seemed like they started the repairs, so the judge gave them exactly six weeks to do the repairs. They took my repairs November 2nd. And when they started my repairs November 2nd, they did work and they stayed in my apartment like they were just like really relaxing about it. And they stayed there and then some of the repairs, um, basically, they started the repairs. And when they started the repairs, they took from November 2nd to December 1st. So they left me without a whole kitchen for Thanksgiving. So I was without, I was three weeks without a kitchen, kitchen cabinets. They took down all the mold and mildew. They broke down the bathroom. So basically, the kitchen and the bathroom was not accessible to use. I actually used all my money basically to pay for Uber Eats. Um, Thanksgiving, I wound up staying in a hotel for a few days with my family. I mean, it was a complete nightmare. And, um, from my understanding, me speaking to, trying to talk to the, uh, manager of my development, he basically said I will not be reimbursed for anything that I spent my money on. I spent over, let me see, because it's me and my two children. My oldest daughter, she's severely asthmatic and the baby has a weak immune system. So basically, they left me stranded. So I had to spend like almost like for breakfast, $25, lunch. I had to, I couldn't, it was no way for me to cook in my kitchen because I had no cabinets, the stove wasn't accessible because everything was all over the place. So my thing is, I'm trying to understand is, are they going to start reimbursing the tenants when they actually start doing the real repairs with this Rad Impact program that I'm hearing about? Because, okay, I got a new bathroom finally, after they done broke down all the walls and left my walls exposed for like maybe a whole week and a half. They, I had a bad water leak, so they would, they decided, I told them, I said, I had a leak. Well, we're not going to do no work because your leak is still there. And I told them my leak was there. So my thing is, are they going to really leave everyone stranded when it actually starts doing river appears? And are peo- is people going to get reimbursed back from this? Because I'm not, I'm not. I spent close to maybe $2,000, $3,000 with all of this, um, all alone in my home just to get out.
Ms. Hicks, you said you're from, uh, Consolidated. Can you tell me specifically which development and consolidation?
Clearmont.
Clearmont Consolidated. Okay, we will follow up with you directly. Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay, um, so that was our last speaker for the evening. As we conclude this evening's public hearing, let me just take the opportunity to thank each and every one of you for taking the time to be here, expressing yourself. Whether you spoke about your single apartment, your single building, or your entire housing development, whether you're a NITRA resident, a board member, an employee, an advocate, or an elected official, we are here for a common reason. Over 160,000 apartments that we collectively need to pay attention to, value and preserve. I want to acknowledge you, validate you, and let you know that your voice and presence resonate. I encourage you to stay involved and together, and let's build a sense of community as we preserve homes. Thank you so much for joining us this evening and stay safe.